Yeah. Do we need to have a motion for the continuance?
Yeah, we should.
Should, okay.
Hold on that announcement about the unanimous vote.
Okay.
That may not apply to planning board. I want to check the biologicals.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I think it was always majority.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to call to order the December twenty first, two thousand and twenty one meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you would kindly call the roll.
Stephen Mans. Let the record reflect that Stephen Mans is not present. Peter Pivko.
Present.
Deborah Ring.
Present.
Andres Peradello. Let the record reflect that Andre Peradello is not present. John Hicksonbaugh.
Here.
Kathleen Ward. Let the record reflect that Kathleen Ward is not present. Henry Smokler. Let the record reflect that Henry Smokler is not present. Carl O'Brien.
Here.
The next order of business, approval of the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one minutes. Has everybody had the opportunity to review them? May I have a motion for approval?
A motion for approval.
Second.
Second.
Is there a second? In all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is the report of the planning staff.
Good evening. Planning Board Members, Chair Angela Van Planting as owner and administrator. There's no case that's been approved by City Commission since the last Planning Board meeting, but staff would like to bring to your attention on the agenda. Planning Board Case Number fourteen forty-five J.J. Needs to be continued until our January the eighteenth Planning Board meeting.
That's it?
Yeah, and then I'll do them all at once. And then the code revisions, Planning Board Case Number eighteen ninety-nine A and eighteen ninety-nine B were placed on the agenda and error, so they should be just taken off.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda are the remarks of the chairperson.
Chair, you gotta vote to make them, vote to move that case, continue the case to January eighteenth.
You want to do it when the item comes up or do it now?
I mean, you can do it now.
Okay.
So.
I move approval of a continuance of Case Number one four four five J.J. to our regularly scheduled January meeting.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous. Our remarks by the chair. I would like to take this opportunity to make you aware that our Chair, Stephen Mans, has suffered a very serious bicycle accident involving multiple fractures and has already had two sets of surgeries. And you should see the car. On behalf of this committee, we wish him a very speedy recovery and a return to us and the best of health. Silence. Two surgeries.
Second accident.
What?
Second accident. He had another accident with the bicycle.
Oh, really? You'll start riding bikes from now on, I can assure you. Okay, this. That brings us next to the declaration of ex parte communications, and I'll start by saying that I've had a brief conversation regarding Case nine fifty-six. How do I pronounce that one again? Sextupled D. But my decisions will be based on the information presented tonight.
I'd also like to add that I had a conversation with Harvey Sawyer and a representative from Related on Planning Board Case Number nine fifty D six. And I can make my decisions based on what I hear tonight.
I also had a conversation with Harvey Sawyer regarding Planning Board Case nine five zero D six. And my decision will be based on the information presented in this eve, this meeting.
John?
I also was contacted by Mr. Sawyer's office for ex parte communication. I declined that invitation. Also, I received an email from Mr. Flick, just a general comment regarding notice on an item that was on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have anything else to report? Okay, we'll now move into the public hearing portion of our meeting and the swearing in of the speakers. If there's any member in the public that wishes to speak, please fill in a card for the record and bring it up to our secretary. Whoever who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please rise with your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are continued cases, which there are none, which brings us to Planning Board Case fourteen one four four D J.J., which we dealt with. Then. Go on to the next one. Bring us to Planning Board Case eighteen ninety. May we hear from the applicant, Mr. Kino?
Good evening. Thank you for entertaining my application this morning. My name is Greg Kino, five one five North Flagler Drive. I'm pleased to represent John Gilbane for a single family dock at twenty-eight thirty North Flagler Drive. It's pretty straightforward. You see these fairly routinely, routinely, but there's two waivers involved in this one. One, from the maximum length of one hundred feet, we're requesting one hundred and forty-two feet. And the second one is, it's outside the middle one-third of the property. We're outside of it by about sixteen feet. This, this property did receive a prior approval back in two thousand, two thousand and nineteen for a hundred and thirty-three foot dock. A little bit different design, that the boat was oriented north-south as far as the lift is concerned as opposed to east-west. We've changed that. The neighbor to the north wasn't real pleased with it. While you might like to look at your own boat, your neighbors sometimes don't. So we changed the orientation so it, the boat would lift would be east-west, which made it, required it to be a little longer. So now we're requesting the hundred and forty-eight feet. That is less than the average, actually, his is one hundred and eight forty, forty-eight feet, I'm sorry. Ours is one hundred and forty-two, so we're less than the average in that area, which I believe is about one hundred and, I think it's like forty-five, I believe. So we're less than the average length. Their, their waiver for the, not only did they get a waiver for their length, but they got a waiver, they're nineteen feet outside, they're one-third, so we're less than theirs. They're pleased and supporting our request. And I'm going to keep it at a minimum because I know it's the holiday week, but if you have any questions, we're glad to answer those, but it resolves the issue with the neighbor. This is a new, a new home that's been constructed on the lot, and they're looking forward to putting in the dock.
Are there any questions, Mr. Kino, none? Thank you very much. Can we hear from staff, Ms. Woodin, or your, her sister?
Ms. Woodin. Angela Van again, planning as owner and administrator. Just to talk about what Mr. Kino talked about. Basically, this, here's the surrounding area. You can see the docks that are long this section of North Flagler Drive. They average from one thirty-three to one at one sixty-one point four. So you can see this dock is actually falling in the average of the docks along this section, as you see from the picture on North Flagler Drive. We did, staff did receive approval from, for Department of Environmental Protection on February nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one for the additional change in the dock. And the finding that complies with all our general use standards, specific use standards, residential district standards. Additional standards for docks except for the dock length and for the boat lift not being in the middle one-third and complies with the waiver standards. Again, requesting a waiver to permit a hundred and forty-two foot long dock where the code requires to be one hundred. And a waiver to permit a boat lift sixteen feet outside of the middle one-third, where the code requires all dock, boat lifts and all be in the middle one-third of the lock. And staff does recommend approval. Concludes staff's presentation. Any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Van? Does anybody from the public have any comments, or what should be heard on this subject? None? Thank you. At this point of the evidence gathering portion, the proceedings is concluded. We return to the board for discussions. Any comments?
No comments.
None? Okay, may I have a motion then?
I will move approval of Planning Board Case Number eighteen ninety with two waivers, subject to the four conditions set forth in the staff report.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. This brings us to Planning Board Case Number nine fifty-six Sextupled D. May we hear from the applicant, Mr. Sawyer?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Board, and happy holidays to all. I will try to make this really brief. Most of you are familiar with it. I don't think it's controversial in any way, and we enjoy staff support on this. So this is two amendments to the City Place Design Guidelines. As a refresher, of course, City Place sits in a Development and Regional Impact. It has its own separate zoning code and design guidelines, for lack of better terminology. It was carved up into various sub-districts twenty-five years ago, when the world and West Palm Beach were, of course, very different. And as West Palm Beach is evolving, and this is evolving from City Place to Rosemary Square to now the Square, and the arrival of the Bright Line and the arrival of jobs. We're having to evolve those design guidelines. We were in front of you two years ago to make changes to what I call the Macy's parcel and create its own zoning design guidelines, and either earlier this year or last year, in front of you for the Publix block. So this is part of that same continued evolution, which I think we'll see each block over time as it becomes appropriate, change its design guidelines. So the two in front of you today, I'll break it into two categories. Category number one, which is the more substantive piece, which is, has two subsections, A and B. A is the creation of a new sub-area that we're calling Rosemary Square East and another sub-area that we're calling Rosemary Square South. Number two here is purely getting nomenclature in the D R I to be consistent with the nomenclature and the remainder of the city code. So there's not much to be seen under number two. Under number one, A, the creation of Rosemary Square East Subarea, which on the right-hand side of your screen is that red rectangular box that is between Hibiscus and Gardenia, east of Rosemary and west of the F E C tracks. This you will know as the AMC movie theater site, Brio, and the Hibiscus parking garage. That is being proposed to increase the height in F A R to allow an F A R of six point five and a maximum height of twenty-five stories. There are conditions that go with that. These conditions are consistent, if not entirely identical, with the conditions that were approved in the creation of the sub-areas where Macy's used to stand and where Publix stands today. I won't read those to you. They're identical to what was approved in the past. And part B of number one is at the southwest corner of the intersection of Rosemary and Hibiscus, what we all know is the Cheesecake Factory site. And there's a reason for this, because the green sub-area across the street to the north, which is what I call the old Macy's site, which begins construction any day now, will include a new cheesecake factory restaurant. So they are one of the most successful tenants in City Place, now Rosemary Square. They are an original tenant, and they would like to upgrade their space from twenty-five-year-old space to modern space. So we are building that for them across the street, which will then allow us to redevelop their current site. And we're asking that that be moved from a five-story height cap to an eight-story height cap. And that would become its own sub-area titled Rosemary Square South Subarea. This gives perspective on what the surrounding heights are. Not surprising to this group. You've seen all of these projects. There is height all the way around this. Rosemary Square is really becoming the, the central core of the downtown, which is good because this is where the residential, the retail, the entertainment, taking cars off the road, truly creating an urbanized area where you can live, work, and recreate all in the same area. And of course, it's all adjacent to the Bright Line, and best of all, it's west of the F E C tracks. So all the human beings that you put here don't have to cross the F E C tracks. That's one less railroad crossing and helps with the overall downtown traffic situation. So surrounded by height, you'll notice across, just to the north of it, that is all Q B D twenty-five. The Ballet Village site going north of that is three sixty Rosemary. That's twenty-five stories by right. You have Park Line up there. Another project that is about to get underway, that's nineteen or twenty stories. And when you move east across Quadro Boulevard, the entire east side of Quadro Boulevard is permitted to host up to twenty-five stories and in some places, thirty stories. Moreover, we are, the applicant is completely surrounded by applicant's property. So there's no one to be harmed or object. The applicant is the surrounding property owner on all sides, except the east, which is a railroad and a very wide Quadro Boulevard, probably the widest road right of way in the downtown. So contextually, it makes sense. The second request has to do with the, the Public Plaza that was recently redone at great expense to my client, very heavily utilized by the public. And it is an urban open space, but it is, that nomenclature is not used in the D R I. And that is what is used in the overall city code. And that's precisely what its use is. There's no disagreement on that. We're just trying to get the language in the City Place D R I to match the language in the code. So the Section ninety-four dash thirty-two A provides for the standards for a major amendment. Request number one A and one B are major amendments to the P D. Number two, the nomenclature is not a major amendment. But with respect to the one A and one B, we are required to comply with all of these standards. We believe we do. Happy to go through them one by one, but I don't think there's any dispute. Staff agrees. We enjoy a lot of support from neighbors in the area, the D D A, the Chamber. I think you'll hear from one of our neighbors, which is the City Place Townhouse P O A. They voted in support of it. You can see the Dreyfus School, the City Place C D D, which is a community development district that is a special taxing district that encompasses the area. So we enjoy wide support for this. So our request is the approval of the Rosemary Square East and Rosemary Square South sub-areas, as described, together with that nomenclature consistency to match the overall city code. And with that, I will stop. These are just some sketch buildings that, I'm not sure that this is what they'll ultimately look like, but you guys like to see pictures. We're not at that stage. But this is at least preliminary design. With that, I stand ready for any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Any questions for Mr. Sawyer?
Thank you very much.
None? May we hear from staff? Is it, Mr. Green or, oh, there you are, hiding behind. Mr. Schneider.
Good evening. For the record, Eric Schneider, Principal Planner. I have a presentation, but it covers what Mr. Sawyer covered. I don't know if you guys want me to go through it or just want to ask me any questions. The report pretty much covers everything, and staff is in agreement. And it does comply with the standards for rezoning.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Schneider? None?
I, I do have a question. If you could just take a moment to, perhaps you could educate me a little bit and maybe with some folks who might be watching at home, what the vision is for Rosemary Square or the square or the D R I going forward. I mean, I think that the, the idea of this sort of low-level, walkable pedestrian scale type of development. And when Mr. Sawyer showed the diagram showing how the blocks around it have been changed over time to allow increased height, including the Macy's site. There seems to be a transformation going on. And is it the intent of the city administration to see a complete reinvention of the square, including all of the blocks? Is this just another in a sequence of others that we should expect to see? I, I just would like to have an idea of where we're going.
Well, the, in answer to your question, the city no longer, the C R A no longer owns the property here. They related group, City Place Retail LLC, exercised their purchase option. So these applications are privately initiated by Rosemary Square. One of the things that, and I've put up here kind of, these aren't the exact buildings. These are massing diagrams. You'll note that we have, you've got the podiums here and is to address your comment about the pedestrian scale. What we worked with the applicant on these, as they come in, you see the Macy's building here. We've got the lower scale on Rosemary that sets back. You've got the, the lower scale continues here, maybe a little difficult to see in the shadow there, along the proposed cheesecake. And the lower scale on some of these buildings, we had them, we discussed with them to push back this to maintain an open space. We looked at the relationship between the buildings so that there wouldn't be a canyon effect in those regulations that are written. So we are truthfully reacting to what the applicant is coming in. You can even see in the back, we got the, the split in the building so that we do not have negative or reduce the negative, potential negative impact of buildings that are coming in as these sites redevelop. The City Place D R I does have development caps on it of the maximum build-out they can do. And it's almost a transfer development. They, first people in and they can move it around. So all of these will get reviewed as the individual building comes in before the Planning Board and then the City Commission as a level-three site plan. And we will make sure that, A, they meet the standards that you're seeing in the regulations today, as well as that they do not exceed the development intensities that are permitted within the overall City Place D R I, which not only includes the properties you see here on either side of Rosemary, but also the Opera Place Project, which is Jeff Green holding a, a development order that he hasn't built on. It's where the pumpkin guy sets up and the Christmas tree guy sets up. The tent site, which is the property project that is just gone, going finalizing with City Commission, y'all saw the level-three. They actually sucked up all the remaining office and had to convert from another use. So what's going to happen when Related comes in with the, any of these buildings, that we're going to have to look at what the building is. If they have to do office, they're going to have to find office to have some banked in the Restoration Hardware site. But by moving the intensity over here, the square footage, then they can't develop Restoration Hardware stays the way it is because there's no more building they can go put there. There's no more F A R, no more square footage. So while you're looking at the intensification of height in here and in, in some of these instances, the F A R and, and on the blocks up to six point five, the actual amount of building that can go there does have caps on it by the D R I. And so we've also worked in, you know, transportation demand strategy things so that additional square footage above what it is, they're going to be providing trolley incentive, you know, additional trolley funding and so forth in this case, and also some incentives to employees that come in off peak hour. So these are all being looked at in, in the context of a, of an urban, redeveloping urban environment as opposed to leaving it at one story. Is there a point where they're not going to be able to do anymore? Probably. When that happens, we don't know. But, you know, the, and Mr. Sawyer had mentioned that north of this site, the Transfer Development Right Program, they don't, the, the, was it the Ballet Villages and the, and the three sixty Rosemary Office Tower here, and to even the Park Line Building, which you see in the back. Those are all done through Transfer Development Right Programs that allowed them to go to twenty-five stories. So the city has determined that this area can handle that height. They're moving it, they're moving the bar a little further south with this block here where it previously hadn't. But that's what they're here for. That's what if the City Commission decides and determines that they agree that moving this intensity here, the height on these blocks is appropriate, then we'll see how the building design comes in, and they showed a couple pictures that, that may be what comes in. But this is the ultimate build-out you can see, and then what we've attempted to do is, and worked with the applicant, to keep that lower scale at the sidewalk level. And then so that you're not feeling like you're in a canyon. You know, you've got this one set back on the Macy's. That's why this one can go a little closer here. And it lines up with some of the, the guidelines that we have in the Quadro Business District, which is to the north of this as well. Did I answer your question? I hope I.
Well, I think it's a lot more than I wanted, but that's, that's good. But I, I do want to talk about this diagram a little bit. I think this is really helpful, and I'm glad that you've brought this up. I, I think one of the magical things about the area, having this historic, the reuse of the historic church building in the center in that public space and then the, the sort of low rise of the buildings around it, that's a magical place that. You know, the magic that happens in redevelopment, you can't always build into it. It's just, it just happens, right? And so you have this building to the east that wraps around it, that's a little lower scale, that then tails, you know, ties into the buildings that both front on Rosemary that create this gateway into the project. I look at this particular, when I look at this diagram and I see the development of the Macy's site that's, appears very, very deliberative and thoughtful in terms of that intersection, I don't really see that in this massing, and I know it's just a massing study, and, and there's three different tones of beige. Are you telling me that the, the lowest, darkest color, that there's actually setbacks between these different colored tiers from the street?
That is correct.
Okay.
The lower tier complies with what the majority of the tower buildings are in our downtown, in our Quadro Business District to ensure that the sidewalk width of sixteen feet is maintained from the back of curb where the parking is. And I can, hope you can see kind of my arrow there, moving back. As it steps up, it does step back again at the next level and then steps back a third tier as you go up the building.
You mean as it's facing south?
As it's facing west. This is the Rosemary.
Okay, so facing south, though, it can be vertical straight up from the ground up?
That is correct. One of the things here is that they have set back.
I see.
To make this, this is going to be their public plaza here. So they set back to, we got them to, because originally they'd wanted to push it back in line with what you see here. Staff was not favorable to that because of what you mentioned with the lower scale of the, the historic Himmel Building and so the theater. So in order to maintain this more open space here in the, in the, call the core, the heart here, we had them push this back. So they did. This passageway is required to come through here, so you don't have a full solid building wall along the entire property. And what you're not reading here is only a portion of this, this is a step back here. So they'll have the podium and then they'll have to push this part back. This mass here cannot be built like that. The, it, it, the, the regulations have been put in there to be more aligned with what you see here, where you only have a certain part of the building up on the street. So it's only fifty percent of the site of, of this tower can be here, of this floor, floor plate. But you can't put the entire length of the building here and then have nothing on the backside. So they've kind of tried to represent it a little bit by these cut-ins here, which weren't in your staff report. This is an updated picture. But it will not look this massive. They can't be built this massive and.
No, I understand that that's just a study in terms of the volume that can be built within and that that doesn't actually represent any particular building. The concerns that I'm expressing is that, and just as a Planning Board member, and I've said this at a few meetings, that the, you know, it is difficult for us to visualize the cumulative impact of all of these banked entitlements that we can. the cumulative impact of all of these banked entitlements that we continue to approve here because so little of it has come out of the ground. And at some point, they will all come out of the ground and, and we don't really have the ability to view them in relationship to other approvals because we'll kind of experience it all at the same time. And so, I, I mean, again, I just expressed those concerns about this sort of, again, I would not want to see any kind of like canyonization around this public space in the center. And if you're telling me that from a regulatory standpoint, we have regulations in place that will ensure that that's not going to happen, then is, is that your response? That yes, we do?
We've put in there the best that we can without, as you said, the buildings out of the ground. What we anticipate is that there will not be a canyonization based on the regulations as they're drafted. These are similar regulations to what we have with the 360 Rosemary Building with the plaza there. And, and so, that I would say they, they built with, without having the, the canyonization of the building back here. It's a little different than what was here on the Bright Line. And that's why we have the breaks that we've put in here on the public site and this, the break here and then this, not being able to build out the whole way is so that we don't get a, we, we try to restrict as much as possible the block to block development and the length of the building. You're not really seeing it, the perspective here, this is not as long as the Bright Line Building is and nor is it as long as the Macy's Building here.
Well, I have a great deal of confidence in Related in terms of their ability to put together the right mix of uses and tenants and so forth to create a vibrant space. I think that the Movie Co. Building with the multi-levels and steps and open space, it, it feels like a very special place and I am just hoping that when we see the redevelopment of the site, that the plan that's put forward will be equally special and that it won't be, again, that it will, you know, continue the, I think probably what has become very endearing to the residents of West Palm Beach. The experience of going downtown, the authenticity of the original City Place, the level of detail, particularly at the street level. Not as concerned about the building that fronts on the railroad tracks and driving in tonight, I was contemplating how really horizontal both of those parking garages are from Quadrel and how they really architecturally, they, the horizontal aspects of them don't really add a great deal, but, so I think redevelopment of that end of the site is exciting. I, I personally would be saddened by the redevelopment of the corner and, but I have confidence in Related and the designers and our staff to make sure that we can continue with the magic and create special places. I appreciate your education and sharing with me and we'll ultimately see how it all turns out when everything comes up out of the ground.
Well, once again, you will see this as a level three site plan when they start moving forward. And all these buildings will require a level three site plan that, that needs approval by the planning board and.
Well, thank you for letting me be so generous with my time in asking a question.
You didn't get our bill yet. Any other questions, Mr. Snyder, or none? Okay, I have three cards. Faustina Guerrero, would you please come up? And Joseph Schuber and Rafael Clemente. There's two podiums if you want to come up and use both.
Hello, my name is.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Faustina Guerrero and I live at 650 Fern Street. I'm the treasurer of City Place Townhouses. Take it off, okay. I'm the treasurer of City Place Townhouses and the board at City Place Townhouses, POA, does support 950D6. We appreciate the millions of dollars that Retail's parent entity has reinvested in Rosemary Square and the 360 Rosemary Tower and the many more millions it will continue to invest in this new project. We fully support their vision and their goals for our neighborhood. And on this particular project, Retail really did work with our community and addressed all our concerns. We appreciate the partnership and commitment Retail and its parent company have in Rosemary Square in designing the buildings, especially at 360 and in planning this new site at the C Block Garage Site. And they said they're going to keep the movie theater and restaurants, so that's really great for us. On behalf of the board, we therefore urge the city commission to support the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schuber?
Yes, my name is Joseph Schuber. I live at 651 Okeechobee Boulevard is called the Tower Condominium. I've lived there 18 years and I've seen a lot of changes. I've been a supporter of Related all along because I think they're a quality company that does quality work and does consider people's quality of life that live there, you know, when they do the developments. There's been a lot of changes. I mean, City Place to Rosemary Square, now to the square. And this proposal is massive and it's scary and I kind of go along with Mr. John Hicksonbaum, is that how you pronounce the name? My concerns about the density, you know, and I'm sure, again, I have confidence in Related when they do something, it's quality and it, it probably will look nice, but again, I hope like Mr. Hicksonbaum said, each individual building is going to be, need to be scrutinized because right now we're looking at a massive, scary situation where a lot of buildings are, you know, a lot of construction and noise and dust and everything else. But again, I, I have confidence in Related to do the right thing and I know we can't stop progress and I know that Related needs to maximize the profitability of the land they own. And again, to repeat myself, they do consider us, the residents, as to the quality of, of life. The thing that I have a problem with is the density again, like the density of the number of people and the traffic. Hopefully, maybe as a suggestion, we can just, Rosemary just be blocked off with no, no car traffic and there, there might be other things, but I would like the planning board to please scrutinize like Mr. Hicksonbaum did, you know, let's not just jump and we all, I mean, I think Related has a good record and we all know that, but sometimes excess can be a bad thing. And my concern is this might be an excess. But again, we'll see, building by building, I have full confidence in Related, so that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you for coming out. Mr. Clemente?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Rafael Clemente, I'm the executive director of the Downtown Development Authority. In August of this year, this proposal came before the DDA board. They heard the presentation and after discussion voted to unanimously support this proposal. I'm here tonight to express that support and also to maybe add a little detail, listen to what was said earlier, but you know, when the City Place DRI was put in place, this was a very different place. We were a very different city, very different time. Looking at where we're at now, it seems that this type of development in, in, in this location is almost necessary to accommodate our growth right now. And looking around it, just looking at this massing study, you know, I walk that area quite frequently and have watched with great pleasure, frankly, 360 Rosemary and Parkline go up. And anytime I've been on that street, those two buildings seem appropriate in that, in that location. And it seems to me that this is just a continuation of this, of that pattern to the south. It is nice to hear Mr. Schuber and others express confidence in Related. I think we've seen what they do. 360 Rosemary is, I think, evidence of their design intent with what comes next for Rosemary Square. So, just again, expressing the DDA's board support and encouraging you to approve this request tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Oh.
May I have an opportunity to?
Yeah.
Address, thank you. And I'll, I'll make this brief, but I'd like to address the concerns that Mr. Hicksonbaum and this gentleman that live in the tower, because Related does and always has, I think, developed best in class in this community, that for the pedestrian and the non-unit owner, the general public that utilizes these spaces, it, it is the best in class in our community. And I would expect no different here. What I think is important to emphasize, which Eric Snyder hit the nail on the head, I'm not sure everyone fully knows how the DRI works. John, you will because you understand DRIs, but it was entitled with a set amount of capacity. And that was broken into office, convention center, Kravis Center, retail, residential, and that is an absolute cap. And so, this proposal, the proposed zoning changes, do not change that intensity cap in any way. We have to live within it. Instead, what it's doing is reconfiguring the building types so that we can create, for example, that pathway, what is presently just a big super block, now we can create a unique pedestrian corridor directly back over to the Bright Line. I know these massing studies do not do it justice at all because you simply see big boxes, but these boxes cannot be developed at this scale. As Mr. Snyder said, that larger box on the right, you could probably develop about 50% of that massing. I'll give you a perfect illustration. 360 Rosemary could have been 25 stories. It's 18 stories. And that is because you run out of parking FAR, you run out of a whole bunch of metrics before you run out of height. So, I'd be rather surprised if any of these develop to the full massing volume capacity that you see here. But in any event, the ultimate regulator of that is the DRI capacity pool. So, whatever we put here, we are going to have to find capacity from somewhere else in the DRI and convert it to put it here. So, these are absolute caps, not likely outcomes, if, if that is helpful. And of course, with respect to this gentleman's comment on traffic, that's one of the problems we're trying to cure, which is the whole new urbanist philosophy. If we don't put our office buildings over here and our residential over here and our recreation there and require people to get in cars to go to all of those, if instead we co-locate them, we, we put a dent not only in future traffic, but even existing traffic, which has been the pattern in the downtown. I know Rafael can give you the stats, but we've actually had flat traffic counts even during our growth for that very reason, it's smarter growth. We're really effectuating the downtown master plan via the DRI. And of course, you will see all of these buildings and have every opportunity to make them better when they come back to you as a level three application. So, I hope that makes it a little bit more clear, maybe not for you all, you know that, but for the sake of the audience and those listening at home, there will be no more density than is already in that DRI pool for the last 25 years.
Thank you, Mr. Oyer.
Thank you.
But you know, in terms of massing studies, this is so far superior than looking at a little colored rectangle on a plan. I mean, it's so difficult to visualize. It's a first step. Yeah, we, we understand. That's not a building design, it's just the volume.
Yeah, and it, and it is scary, I agree, when you put that up on the screen, which I didn't include it in my presentation for that reason. I did include, if you recall, a couple of basic building designs that I think better reflect the volume and what that setback and pedestrian feel would be. And that plaza at the northeast corner is a very large public plaza. And the setback requirements on the Cheesecake Factory site are the largest in all of City Place. So, the staff has been extremely protective of that intersection and the historic church, which is why the Macy's Building, the tower is set back so far as well.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oyer. Okay, at this point, the evidence gathering portion of the proceeding is concluded and we return to the board for discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer up a, a couple of comments. What I actually do like about this project and I, and I will say with Related in general, and I don't work for Related or have association with them, is though the desire to really be a part of the community. And I hear what John is saying, I've been ambivalent about a couple of projects that have come up recently, but one of the things that I'm seeing, and I mentioned this in a meeting earlier with Mr. Oyer and Jordan today, is that especially with the rejuvenation of Rosemary Square, we're seeing a lot more foot traffic coming from Rosemary Square into the downtown area. I work downtown. And so, there seems to be this desire for, a, a true desire for pedestrian traffic and creating that, not a monolith, I hear what you're saying, John, it's going to be, you know, perhaps all these big buildings, you know, coming up and almost being enclosed and encased, but I, I actually don't feel that that's their goal. I feel like their goal is to, yes, that new urbanization, making sure that people can live, work and play in one area, but that also that people like me who, you know, don't live downtown, I can go to Rosemary Square, walk down, downtown to, you know, eat a pistache and then walk back up or take the trolley, you know, back up to Rosemary Square. So, it's creating much more of a, an urban environment that's, that's connected. And I think that what they're doing here is more of the same, but for someone like me, again, who doesn't live downtown, that there'll be more offerings in terms of things to, to do, entertainment, that kind of thing. And those folks who will be living downtown, they will not be as impacted by traffic. So, I think that they're really making an effort to not only engage in that new urbanization process, but also to cut down on that traffic, that, that back and forth that we experience still here in, in West Palm Beach, that 0.5 mile radius that so many of us do in, in West Palm Beach, that's where a lot of that traffic churn comes from in my mind, just from even the way I live my life. So, I really applaud this project when the level three planning, when we get to that stage, I'm sure I'll have a lot more detailed questions. I mentioned parking, always talk about parking, but I really applaud you guys on this project, so.
Thank you, Karen.
I do, I do too. I applaud you on the project. As I was talking to Harvey Oyer, I talked about the increased walkability that's going to come about from the development with this. I do appreciate the information on the building caps and sometimes, I guess, what's proposed as with the 360, what that could have been in height is not. And so, I think there's, you know, it's very responsible planning and development and Related has, you know, set a track record. And so, we can appreciate, you know, what they've done in the past and what they continue to do. And we've seen the evolvement of this area from where it was to what it's now. And it's, it's outstanding.
Thank you, Debra. I'd like to go to like 30, 40 years in the future, you know, and take a picture and bring it back and say, John?
Well, I intend to support the application so you can all breathe a sigh of relief. I mean, I, I understand it, I just, I'm an urban designer, so I raise these issues of trying to visualize the cumulative effect of all of these development approvals and entitlements that we're putting in place and trying to understand how they will work together to create the magic. I mean, City Place is something that put West Palm Beach on the map. It is world, known around the world for its exceptional urban design and the magic that it has. And magic in urban design is something that you can't design, it doesn't come out of a formula, it's not about the setbacks, it's, there's just something that happens. And that happened with City Place. There's something about the scale and the architecture and the authenticity and the realness of it. And as we replace these buildings that have become endearing to us with buildings that are representative of the 21st century, there has to be some way to connect those buildings to the endearing buildings that remain so that we can capture, continue to keep that real, you know, that magic. And that's the concern that I express. And that's really why I was asking about, because again, this particular location with the historic church in the center and the buildings that surround it, along with the rest of Rosemary coming to Okeechobee, creating that gateway, that to me is the most special. We have a lot of other sites in downtown where we're looking for, for redevelopment. I understand that Related holds this. I just want to express my thoughts and make sure they're on the record so that when we paper, you know, pen goes to paper, that we can get something that's as special. Look, and I don't even think the block is all that special right now, there's basically a corner of it that's special, okay? But that specialness across from that church is something that we want to try to see in a building that is representative of the 21st century because again, we're seeing buildings be replaced with contemporary architecture. And there is a way, it's all about the context, that's how you build a city. It's about the relationship of new buildings to old buildings and how. of new buildings to old buildings, and how they all fit together, and how it feels when we walk down the street. So, I don't have any objection to the concept of changing this. I just wanted to put some thoughts out there, and, and I have full confidence in Related and their development team to make that happen, because they do exceptional work. And, and that, I would not necessarily put my blind faith in many developers to do that, but Related is one of them that I would put in that category.
Thank you, John. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I will move approval of application, Planning Board Case 950DDDDDD.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Okay, Planning Board Case Number 1899A, we need a motion? No? Nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay.
Okay.
Electional officers, do you want to leave that for the next meeting, since we're only four of us here today?
Yeah.
We think we should have a full board for that.
Next meeting, yes.
Yeah, let's leave it for the next one.
Need to check with the man to see if he still wants to be chair.
Okay. Nothing else? No new business, no old business? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Mary Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa.
Yes, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Happy New Year to, Happy New Year to each and every one of you.